I called a meeting of the Huntley Community School District, 15th Seat Board of Education. Order at 6:00, 6 o'clock PM. Roll call please. We have a forum.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mr. Bibbit. Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Fekety.
Here.
Mrs. Burry. Mr. Bobby.
Here.
Mrs. Myrino.
And we do have a forum. With that, I will make your motion to move into closed session at 6:01 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy, for the second. Have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Fekety.
Yes.
Mrs. Burry.
Yes.
Mr. Bobby.
Yes.
Mrs. Myrino. Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
All right, we are in closed session. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Bibbit.
Here.
Always fun late in the day. What'd you got, Acton?
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for being patient as our call session ran a little bit into overtime. We will resume an open session. A roll call please. Sorry, it is 7:08 PM.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Beckety?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bobby?
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Here.
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Mr. Bitman?
Here. All right, we do not have any action items that is coming out of closed session with that. We'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item number five, student recognition.
Good evening, Board. Tonight, we are going to be recognizing the Humley High School's boys and girls' track teams. So I'd like to invite Mr. Maxon and Mr. Munson up. Actually, Mr. Munson first.
Yeah, right. Go first. Oh, come on. All right, well, thank you. This is working, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for having us, guys. It's always a pleasure to come before the Board and talk about the young and wonderful athletes that we get to work with on a daily basis. The three girls to my left are three of our Humley High School girls' track athletes who competed at the state meet and brought home state medal this past May, at the end of May. So we're going to start with Addie Bueson. You can raise your hand if they've got that. Addie's a junior in our program. She qualified this year in three different events. She was on our four-by-one, our four-by-two, and she qualified in the long jump. She's qualified and been a part of our state team all three years of her high school career. And this year, she brought home eighth place in the long jump, bringing home her first state medal. Next to my left is Deanna Robertson. Deanna was a senior in our program this year. She is a three-time state qualifier in the discus and a two-time state medalist. This past season, she earned ninth place at the state meet in the discus. And I'm sure Coach Oring, if he had the mic, would speak about Deanna's leadership and her commitment. Her leadership this year as a senior with our throws program was everything we can ask for as a coaching staff. And next season, Deanna will move to Illinois State University where she will continue to compete in throwing and track field. Um, and next season, Deanna will move to Illinois State University where she will continue to compete in throwing and track field. And last to my left is Dominique Johnson. Dominique was a senior in our program this year. I have a lot written down here. Um, in total, Dominique ends her high school career with 12 total state medals. Um, that includes five total state championships. She won three triple jump championships, one long jump championship, and a relay championship. Um, she is our school record holder in the triple jump. And this year at the state meet, she set the meet record in triple jump, all-time Illinois history at the state meet in triple jump, with a jump of 42 feet, eight and three-quarters inches. Um, she also brought home a long jump championship this year. And next year, Dominique will head to the University of Miami, Florida to compete on their track team. Again, echoing what, uh, Mr. Monson said, thank you very much for having us here to recognize the kids. Um, ladies, congratulations on outstanding seasons and careers for two of you. Uh, I get the pleasure to introduce to you Tommy Nitz. Uh, Tommy was a senior in our program this year. Uh, Tommy is probably the most, um, dominant distance athlete we've ever had at Huntley High School. Uh, Tommy holds five of our six school records. Uh, indoors, he holds the 800-meter, 1600-meter, and 3200-meter record. Outdoors, he holds the 1600-meter record, 3200-meter record, and missed the 800 record by one, less than a second. Uh, Tommy was our state champion this year in 3A in the 1600-meter run. Uh, his time is probably not what he would have liked to have, for it to have been. Uh, however, in the distance races, you kind of let the pack dictate pace. Um, Tommy ran in 41624. Good memory for a throws guy. But, uh, I think Tommy, if he was, uh, would have, uh, had it to do over again, he might have tried to go out a little bit faster. Um, but Tommy ran under, ran around 410 for us this year. I think he would have liked to have been under 410 at the state track meet. But, um, again, state champion, uh, three, three state medals. Last year, he finished seventh in both of these, both the 1600-meter run and the 3200. Uh, three times, three-year state qualifier, uh, a guy who's going to be missed in our program. And, uh, next year, Tommy's headed to Coastal Carolina University, just outside Myrtle Beach, and will be competing in cross-country and track and field there. Thank you.
All righty, here, so. Can't see our board to see that, they're kind of tall. Can you, I'd like the two of you to maybe go over this way? Or just the windows, you know? You know, the windows. Melissa? Well, it's all about. We're good. No, you guys, you're good. You're good, you're good, you're good. You know what, I'll come down from the top, help them. There you go.
Congratulations. Thank you, everybody, for coming in. Thank you, parents, for your support. All right, our next item on the agenda, um, number six, volunteer recognition. Come on up.
Good evening, Board. I'm just going to kick this off and then turn it over to Eileen. Uh, tonight, we're going to be presenting the Positive Outlier Award. And the Positive Outlier Award is an award given to a community partner who has gone above and beyond for the school district and has positively impacted our students. Um, and the recipient of this award tonight is Del Webb Sun City Community. And at this time, I'd like to introduce those who came, um, to represent tonight. Um, these folks have all played an instrumental role, and you'll hear a little bit more about this. Um, but we have, we have Bill Nima. That's incorrect. Bill is the president of the Sun City Community Homeowners Association. Next, we have Ben Manabod. He is the president of the Del Webb Charter Club. And then we have. And then we have Dolores Fisher. Dolores Fisher is a Del Webb resident and a very committed Huntley 158 volunteer. So there is one person here who, who we wish could also be here, and her name is Christine Sutch. Christine Sutch is a, a Sun City Community Association Board member as well. She's also a reporter for My Huntley News, which is the weekly free publication that gets distributed to Del Webb residents. She has written numerous articles about our partnership, um, you know, between Del Webb and the school district and has been a big supporter for us. She was also involved in our strategic planning a little bit last year. So, um, just want to give kudos to her as well. But all of these individuals have made significant contributions to what you're going to learn a little bit more about here from Eileen Del. So Eileen is our volunteer coordinator, and I'm going to turn it over to her.
Thank you, Denise, for the introduction. And thank you, Board members and Superintendent Lombard, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. It's truly an honor to celebrate a group of individuals whose impact on our students has been both profound and enduring, our Del Webb volunteers. The partnership between District 158 and the Del Webb community is rooted in a rich history dating back to the spring of 2001. This was when a small group of Sun City University came together to form what would become known as Community Student Outreach, or CSO. Their vision was to create a meaningful, intergenerational connection with our students, and they most certainly have succeeded. Since that time, Del Webb volunteers have been a constant presence in all of our schools. Not a single year has passed, except for COVID years, without their generous support. You can refer to the attachment in tonight's board packet with a comprehensive list of the many programs and events we've partnered with over the years. It's truly remarkable to consider how many students have benefited from their support over the past two decades. What sets our newly formalized partnership apart from those earlier efforts is the official backing of the Sun City Community Association, as approved at their board meeting on February 26th of this year. Special thanks go to Dolores Fisher, a dedicated Del Webb volunteer and mentor in the high school CTE department, whose initiative set the wheels in motion for pursuing a broader and more formal collaboration between Del Webb and District 158. We're also deeply grateful to Nick Weedaw, CTE department chair, for his efforts in helping bring this partnership to life. And I'd be remiss if I did not mention the constant support of longtime volunteer and Sun City Board member Christine Sutch, who jumps on every opportunity to support all of our students. The Sun City Community Association Board, their executive director, Brian Gregory, and charter club president, Ben Manabod, have fully supported and are actively working with me, Dolores, and the District 158 CTE staff to build meaningful community connections. These efforts are leading to volunteer involvement that helps our high school students with college and career readiness. Their goals align perfectly with ours, to inspire, challenge, and empower all students always. Beginning last spring, we launched this exciting new partnership, supporting students across various CTE disciplines, including engineering design and development, consumer ed and personal finance, human development, the incubator program, and the Medical Academy Physical Education PT Program. As this partnership continues to grow in the new school year, more opportunities and additional courses and disciplines will be added. Bold study wins the race, and we are making steady progress. Sun City Board members, Nick Weedaw, Dolores Fisher, and I have worked diligently to establish relationships with outstanding clubs at Del Webb that will bring generations together and inspiring new ways this school year. For example, the Rural Repubes is excited to work with our basic engineering students. The Woodchucks woodworking club hopes to collaborate with our GL consumers. The So-and-so's club looks forward to supporting our fashion and design staff and students. In human development, members of the Nurses Interest Group will continue to offer their insights and mentorship. Retired teachers and the Retired Educators and School Personnel Group are eager to work with students pursuing futures in education. Even the owner and manager of Jameson's Restaurant at Del Webb has expressed a desire to support our culinary students. These volunteers offer more than just help. They offer connection. And we should never underestimate the value of the wisdom and life experience they bring. Our students are learning from people who have lived the very careers and challenges our students are studying. That kind of education goes beyond the textbook. The partnership enriches more than academics. It nurtures empathy, respect, and a true sense of community. It teaches our young people that learning can and should happen across generations, and that every individual, regardless of age, has something meaningful to contribute. In a world that often moves too fast and forgets the value of the past, our Del Webb volunteers will remind us of something timeless. The strength of a community lies in its willingness to lift each other up, no matter the age, no matter the role. Please, let's continue to show our appreciation and ensure that the volunteers of Sun City know just how much they matter. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Mrs. Park, can I just, um, one, first of all, thank you for everything that you do for the district. I know that, um, at many of the schools we walk in, and whether it's, like you talked about, the CTE, um, we've got things that are going on at, um, uh, Hydaman Middle School, and I'm going to say it wrong, but I know there's some of the conversations with the social studies, um, department and our students about the various, uh, uh, generational, um, discussions. We've got, um, volunteers that are in our elementary, um, over here, reading, um, the young authors' books, and so many very, very, um, important things that are, that are going on. So thank you, one, for all of the work, but two, then to formalize that, uh, this year, um, in a joint partnership and effort really just goes to show how committed, um, Sun City and the residents are to continue to make, um, our school district at great place. And, um, for those of you who are unaware, you know, we do student recognitions all of the time, and, and there are different criteria for that. Um, and I cannot recall the year that we started the Positive Outlier Volunteer Community Award that's been, but it's been a number of years, and this is only the third that we've given out. And so, um, it really is for going above and beyond for the commitment to our students and our staff. So thank you for everything that you do and have committed, uh, continue to commit to do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, again, for your volunteer efforts and, and coordinating and working with our students throughout the district. Um, I want to offer an apology. I made a mistake. Um, and I should have done this sooner, and, um, I couldn't read my own chicken scratch, so. I was supposed to do this before the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, but unfortunately, like I said, I made a mistake. Um, I'd like to take a moment to honor the memory, one of our students who recently passed away. Iman Deep Singh was a rising senior at Huntley High School. Iman's kind and friendly nature and welcoming presence touched the lives of his classmates, teachers, and staff alike. It seemed as though everyone knew Iman, for his passing was deeply felt by very many people. Our hearts go out to his family and friends during this incredibly difficult time. We've taken a moment of silence to reflect, remember, and honor Iman and the life that he brought to the Huntley 158 community. Thank you. That will move to item seven, public comments. I have one sheet here. Renee St. Clair.
Good evening, members of the Board, District 158 Administration, and community members. My name is Renee St. Clair, and I am the Medical Academy Coordinator at Huntley High School. Forgive me for reading this, but if I didn't, I would go way over the time limit. I am speaking to you today to tell you that for the last several years, I have tried to get a new class proposed and have been met with heavy resistance. Between me, a teacher at Huntley High School, and you, the school board, there are six steps or people that have to approve a class proposal when I follow the chain of command. I've tried that, and this is so important, I feel I have to bring the information directly to you. The class I have tried to propose is our own basic nursing assistant class. When students complete this class and pass the certification exam, they will be certified nursing assistants. There is a shortage of CNAs in our community. I have spoken with our facilities, such as Alvin Estate, Deer Pass, and Heritage Woods, White Oaks of Huntley, and they all support us having our own class, and are in dire need of CNAs. One of them even mentions what they are calling in healthcare, the impending silver tsunami. The need for CNAs is only going to rise, and we as a school can directly help our community by having our own VNA class. I have researched two possible funding opportunities for this class. One, a grant from Northwestern will cover every cost, from supply needs to teacher salaries, and even structural improvements to the building if they were needed. The problem is, I can't efficiently apply for the grant until the class is approved by the school board. The second would be a partnership with Mercy Health. They currently sponsor a class in Janesville, Wisconsin, where every cost is covered by Mercy, Mercy Health. But since opening their brand-new hospital in Crystal Lake, they do not have such a partnership with any of the high schools in Illinois. Not only is there a possibility that this class will cost District 158 absolutely nothing, but it will actually also save the district money. This school year, we will be sending 19 students to take the class at MCC. And District 158 has to pay just over $1,000 per student, so we'll be paying MCC almost $20,000. I have a location for this class worked out. I have potential funding for this class available. I have four possible instructors for this class, including two of our own Huntley High School nurses. These are all reasons I've been giving in the past for why Huntley High School should not have its own class. These are all reasons I've been giving in the past for why Huntley High School should not have its own class. And when given the opportunity, I have tackled every single one. I acknowledge the situation is different right now than it's ever been before. Here are the two most important things. I have eighteen students who wanted to take a VNA class this year at MCC and can't because it's full. And I have a community who desperately needs these CNAs in their facility. You can directly impact the community needs by approving this class. I hope this fall, when you get a list of new proposed classes, that this class makes it onto the list for your approval. And then if it doesn't, you ask why, and you give me the opportunity to tackle those obstacles. Because I know when given the opportunity, I can. If you have any questions, you know where to find me, I'm the only state at Huntley High School. Thank you for listening.
Can I just make a quick comment about that? So, my wife is a physical therapist at, uh, at Heritage, um, so right around there. She's working with some of our students through our CNAs, it is an incredible experience, and, and we need to expand this. My wife is a physical therapist, so I know there are not enough CNAs out there. And it's a great way for someone to get into the medical field and understand what it's about. So, I hundred percent applaud what you're saying.
And I know some people will say, "Well, this is just nursing." But I truly believe, and your wife would probably support, if they are gonna become a medical professional, any of the 250 medical professionals, they will be a better one if they start in the CNA. Even if nursing isn't their end goal, they will be a better physician, they will be a better physical therapist, they will be a better dentist, if they start with that humbling experience of gaining and becoming a CNA and helping our community, even if it's only for a year or two, even if it's not their end goal, it will make them better at whatever future profession they are going to become, for anything in the medical field. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Sorry for interrupting.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional sheets, last second, Ms. Park?
No.
All right, with that, we'll move to item eight, revision and adoption of the agenda. For anybody that has anything to offer or remove regarding the agenda.
As this is, um, one of our summer meetings that doesn't have the committee as a whole on there, similar to last time, there are a number of items that will either be action items or might be an update, but we did put all of the committees on here. And so, if, um, the committee that you had up doesn't have something, and you don't have anything, we could just go ahead and remove that, we just would need to take care of that right here.
Yeah, curriculum instruction does not have anything for tonight.
Remove thirteen.
Neither does special ed.
Remove fourteen.
Neither does seventeen, human resources.
Remove seventeen.
We can do fifteen.
Remove.
Remove.
Okay, remove fifteen, thank you for one. We have stuff for sixteen, eighteen, and nineteen. All right, anything else to add or subtract? All right, with that, I move to adopt the agenda as presented, with the removal of item thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen. Last second, please.
Second.
Second for Mrs. Meyerino. Voice, vote, please, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Your superintendent's report, item nine.
Sure, we'll first start with donations, we have two donations that, um, we would like to recognize here. We have Kelly Williamson Company with five hundred dollar donation to Leggie Elementary to be utilized with, uh, science and technology. And then the Troy Family with a meet code for the Huntley High School Theater Department to be utilized with many, uh, musicals and plays and whatnot. So, thank you to both of those individuals, companies and families, for the support of our students. Uh, the other update, um, as we are in the summer, it's just about three weeks, and we'll be back here with, with students, and so, um, a lot of different things going on, uh, throughout the summer, and we'll have, um, many updates and presentations and all those things here coming forward in, in August. And, uh, just really, really excited about, uh, a number of the, the things that we will have, uh, coming. But we won't rush summer just yet, for those of you who are out there watching or in the audience. But, um, one of the pieces that I do want to, um, highlight, I put at, uh, your, your areas here, some more of an outline, uh, of moving forward with the Huntley 158 Student Advisor Board Member to the Board of Education, and then we've kind of talked, so taking all of these things and wanna highlight, um, just to make sure we've captured everything that the board is thinking as we move forward, knowing that this year one might look a little bit different in terms of, uh, kind of the timeline of, um, applications and whatnot. But the, um, the overview would be that, um, you know, we are going to begin down the, uh, venture of, um, offering an opportunity for student leadership, advocacy, and engagement in district governance through a student board advisor to the Board of Education role. I'm okay if you want me to change that to say board member, it kinda goes in both. The reason, uh, kinda landed there is because it is more of an advisory role, since they're not able to be a voting, uh, member and, and whatnot. It is, uh, kinda looked at in that sense there. That the leadership role not only elevates student voice in the district, um, decision-making, but cultivates those skills for students in communication, advocacy, and civic engagement. And that we will be moving forward in, in pushing out opportunities, um, and through various communication roles to, um, hopefully, uh, get a number of applicants for this. In the future, we would start this process in, uh, January, second semester, with a meeting, kind of talking about, um, the opportunity, questions, answers, all of those things. But, um, I know that there was, uh, a lot of discussion, um, and it sounded like the board would like to see two, um, members, so, um, looking at that, that we would want one incoming, um, junior and one incoming senior this year from the high school to be selected to serve in this non-voting advisory, uh, role, and that they would serve a two-year for continuity, um, so that junior would be on for two years, the senior obviously would only be the one year, but then the next year, that individual come. So, again, um, as that cycle would go, they'd serve for, for two years, um, again, for the consistency, the opportunity to carry through some of those components. And then that junior member, or junior, um, when they become that senior could kind of be a mentor for the next person coming on. And so, uh, again, first year, one would be a two-year, uh, role, one would be a one-year. Their roles and responsibilities kinda outline that they're expected to, um, attend the one or two meetings, uh, per month, typically held on that first and third Thursday, I know a lot of you know this, but this would be information that we'll be putting in, um, I'll be working with Mrs. Woods to be putting our administrative, uh, procedures together, and, uh, then we'll get this out, I will work probably with Denise to get this, uh, the application out. And that we would have a designated time on the agenda for them to give a student report, they would be, just like the rest of us, having a report to be put in, and share updates, information that they may get, be gathering from the student body, as well as be that, um, person that we could ask about specific items that might be coming up that we want that student voice from. Their role then would be to be working with, and then highlighted here, they have to have that audience to be able to get the, um, student voice, right? And so, um, at the, the high school, looking at somebody who is involved in either the, um, NHS, the, uh, student council, the principal leadership, um, council, hopefully they are looking at getting salt with student athlete leadership, um, back together, so that that could be one of the components, that they would be taking information from the board back to these larger groups. Um, and then they have to figure out how to disseminate that throughout the rest of the student body at the high school, and then gather that information where they can talk. So, it's not just, if I'm the student, and it's not just Jessica's opinion, but really gathering, um, on, at their regular meetings to bring back to the board what are, not only just the celebrations and updates, but what, what are the challenges or struggles or concerns that they're having? So, they would have that other component. Um, we would ask that this, uh, these two individuals also be, um, on the superintendent advisory council that Dr. McCrystal and I are going to be putting together. And so, again, that won't just be high school students, but they would be a member of that as well. Those meetings would, uh, take place during the day, but we'll have, um, more, uh, student representation on that. Again, they serve as that liaison, that bridge between the student body and the Board of Education to gather feedback, share important updates, and represent their peers. Expectation to hold, uh, as representatives of Huntley 158, student board advisors are expected to model integrity, respect, and leadership at all times. Again, it would be an advisory role, um, just so, uh, people would know, they would not, um, be voting, and they would not be down in executive session. And that we would pair them with one of you to kind of be a mentor as well, uh, through this process. They'll have district leadership, um, to, to come to through our meetings, but again, when we, we talk about, uh, some of the things at the beginning about advocacy and leadership and civic engagement, you know, we're learning from you as well. Some of the requirements, um, in, in taking the information from some of our discussions, again, that they'd be an incoming junior or senior this year, um, must be in, uh, good academic and behavioral standing, must be available to attend those Thursday evening board meetings, um, that they would, uh, apply for this first time, that we would have it by August fifteenth, um, that we could get those, then they will be, uh, reviewed. We would have all of this information sent to Sharon, didn't tell you that, but Sharon, they'll come to you together. Uh, and then we would select, um, candidates, finalists to, to come through for that interview, and that, um, we would, um, want them seated, sworn in, all those fun things in September, uh, for this year. And then, that future timeline, again, we would start that in January, um, in looking at, um, a variety of different things. So, um, since they are a representative of, um, the voice of the students, um, a piece that in the future would be that, maybe it's that principal advisory, um, leadership advisory council, some of the other, uh, organizations at the high school would choose who those candidates would be to be the finalists that the board would interview. So, again, it is representative of the student body, um, at the high school. And we could tweak any of these things, so please let me know. But, um, they have an application, um, a resume outlining their skills, activities, experiences, leadership roles. And one of the things that I would like us to see is that we're not having the same student be, um, the, you know, president of this and the board and the that, we want to expand that voice and expand those leadership skills and opportunities. Um, they would have a one- to-two-page essay, um, describing and introducing themselves to all of you and explaining their interests and why they are the best candidate. And then, a couple letters of recommendation from teachers, administrators, or community members, and then we would have that interview process. So, um, kind of getting this out there, putting that in an administrative procedure to policy two colon four zero, which is the Board of Education Board Member Qualifications. Uh, we would have to add, uh, one component, um, of a draft that we'll bring in the August committee as a whole, we already got all this outlined for you. But, uh, here, it's, it's a very short, um, policy, it's talking about just kind of age requirements and all of those things of a board member and, um, resident of Illinois in the district. But, uh, we need to add, uh, a paragraph, um, that says the board will annually appoint up to two student board members to serve in an advisory capacity. The student members will not have any voting privileges and may not attend executive session on a board meeting. So, we'd have to add that to our policy, and we'll put this in, um, administrative procedures, we'll bring that to the committee as a whole, and then hopefully that will then get passed out of the Legislative Policy Committee for, uh, the board meeting, uh, the regular board meeting for approval. But, super excited to see this come to fruition, oh, we're gonna have to move some seats around, so, those of you at the tables, I may juggle here on a little bit. Any thoughts, any concerns, anything you'd like tweaked before we finalize this process?
No, it's very exciting, uh, just great work, and I, I love how it just breaks down the roles and responsibilities in very clear. If there would be one addition, I guess the question would be, do you want to put some time parameters on how long that student is physically present? So, if we have a long meeting that goes till ten, eleven, midnight, we wanna say, "You can leave at, at this time."
I think that's definitely, a hundred percent. A couple of them have, um, not like, an official time where they put there and we can push them out the door, but schoolwork does come first.
Right.
And so, one of the things that, as we're building that agenda, we're gonna want to, um, uh, put their updates right up there towards the beginning. Uh, I, I've, um, talked to a number of different, um, superintendents, school districts that, um, do that, and a lot of times, they don't want them past eight-thirty or nine, so that they can get home. You know, we know many of them are up a lot, a lot later than that, but, you know, to make sure, if it is a longer meeting that we're having that, which we would probably also then want to move and arrange some of our topics, depending on what ones that you feel you want that student input on for the board discussion where you may be asking them specific questions. We'll wanna make sure that that kinda, we'll just rearrange that agenda. But, that is absolutely a very valid point that we would put on there, that we're gonna wanna have that cap and kinda excuse, excuse them to, to be able to go out and do their main job, the students.
Great, thank you.
Good point, good point.
Thank you.
And then, um, real quick, can we just put a little verbiage in there and clarify, let's say, I know the expectation is the two years, but if something happens and somebody can't, what is our policy or our process going to look like if we need to then, um, are we just gonna start the interview process all over again? Would those two board members have a say in to bringing, in recommending somebody? How would we want to handle something like that?
So, let me ask you, how would you like to handle that? One way we could do it is going back to say, um, if there was, somewhere just somebody were to leave the board at, at appointment process, that, again, if we're, we're looking for them to, um, be from one of those larger organizations of the high school, that, um, maybe they would recommend some individuals from there to come forward that could interview them, what are your thoughts?
I, I kinda like the idea of, uh, you know, the two, um, current members, kinda recommending a pool, maybe not appointing someone specifically, but recommending someone to come in and so. I think if it, really if it was important for somebody that they really wanted to give it a shot, would we say, "No, you have to wait till January," or what would you?
Excuse me?
Anyone, yeah, well, anyone. No, it looks like I'm looking at you.
No.
No, I think, I think the recommendation aspect of that is important.
Yeah.
I think one of the questions to ask is, how long would you want this vacancy to be open, or how quickly can it be filled? And I don't know what that answer is. It might, as person, the, the two individuals that get selected go through a different rigor process for, for their selection, do we change the rigor process for somebody that is a, a replacement for the balance of that term? And, and, and I don't have that answer, I, I wasn't, didn't think of that question, but it's a really dark, good one.
Or do we handle it like, kind of when we replace someone that resides from the board, and then you have to go through the process of the next available opportunity? And since we're doing this on a yearly basis in January, then would the natural progression be to then apply along with other, with everyone else? If, if you're, you know, if you're temporarily filling that slot of two years, then just go through the natural progression with everyone else that following January?
Cause we still have at least one. Now, there could be two circumstances, but the likelihood of that would be probably smaller.
Yeah. What about if we had more than one or two applicants? You just roll on to the other ones that didn't, kinda gross speak, I don't wanna use that word, but, but, you know, we can do that way too, I don't know.
That's the...
That already went through it all.
Yeah.
So.
Your person.
Yeah.
That will kinda embed this in here, that's great.
All right, anything else on the superintendent's report?
Yeah, any questions for me?
All right, moving on, uh, Chief Financial Officer, item ten, your offer.
Yes, the FY twenty-six budget. Just a few updates, I please present, this is draft three of the budget, you know, I was debating, uh, presenting this because the majority of adjustments, uh, we saw some material adjustments coming down the pipeline. So, I'm not gonna spend the time to go through all ninety-plus pages here, uh, because we've done that really already. I'm just gonna talk about a few of the adjustments that this draft kinda represents, and those adjustments are really just state and federal revenue and some, some related expenditure. And those adjustments are really just state and federal revenue and some related expenditure adjustments. So the very first adjustment that we made to this draft of the budget was while we received the final EBF numbers from the state of Illinois. And that's always filled with a little anxiety because you're hoping that with that $350 million that the state did decide to set aside that, well, that you're in the same pecking order as you were last year and you didn't fall down at tier. So the good news is, good news, bad news, right? We're still tier one, so that's good news because we receive a little more funding. And the other good news is while we received 1.23 million and $579, and we budgeted 1.23 million, so there was a $579 favorable adjustment there. So that made me happy, actually. So that was adjustment number one. Adjustment number two was we were able to finalize a lot of the title grants. And we're still waiting, Amy's not, Ms. McCrindle's not there, Dr. McCrindle, but we still might have some rollovers that we add to that, but we did finalize those title grant numbers and the related expenses associated with the title grants. Overall, between the mix, they're relatively flat, and we expect them to be a little more. We'll probably have an uptick once we learn what those rollovers are in fact, as finalized as. Number three, we did have a reduction in the teacher vacancy grant by 103,000 down to 207,000. So that was a revenue reduction and a related expense reduction, so there was really no impact to the budget there either. And then lastly, we made an orphanage claim. We finalized the orphanage claim, and that went down a little bit. That was a $45,000 reduction in that claim. We had fewer kids that we can claim for with fewer associated expenses. And so that was reduced to 55,000, and again, down $45,000 from last year's budget. The orphanage claim is actually fairly interesting because it's the only claim we have with the state of Illinois for which they pay 100%. There's no per cap reduction, there's no proration. It's the only thing that they will pay 100% for. So if we have, if we have a student that qualifies, that has a one-on-one aid, that has special transportation, you know, we do everything we can to make sure that we're quantifying those costs accordingly because we know we're owed that refund. But it is the one grant that the state has that they are 100% paying each and every year, so that's good. Other than that, that's really all of the adjustments. But what I really kind of want to also note is, right, and we talk about this every single time we present the budget, there are risks associated with the budget, and there's a lot of continued adjustments that we still need to make. Some of the risks, right, revolve around, it's something we talk about every month, it's health insurance, right? There is still an adjustment to health insurance. We have, we have budgeted a 7% increase in health insurance. Next month, we're going to have to, we're going to have to look long and hard at that because frankly, I don't think 7% is enough. And we'll have to decide as a board and as administration whether we want to increase that budget. And if we do increase that budget to what it probably should be, along with maybe several of these other adjustments, we may end up approving a deficit budget. So we have to know that. So that's one of the big risks. The other big risk is special education costs, right? Each and every year, we finalize a lot of our special education costs. The big one is private facility, and we generally do that in the month of August when we have a final headcount, we have final contracts, we know where our kids are attending, and we finalize that number. This year, we had, we had some additional kids go to private facilities, and we exceeded budget on that line item. And we expect to do so, but until we have those final numbers, because as you can imagine, right, we have kids falling off just as we do here, right, K through 12. We have kids coming out, and we have kids falling off. So once we finalize that number, we'll share that with the board next month at the board meeting. And then lastly, right, the overall health of the economy, right? We still have six months left in the calendar year. CPI, right, CPI for the month of June just came out. There was an uptick, uptick to 2.9%, right? Investors, the market, and we all see what's happening in the market, right? The question is, is are we at the peak of the mountain or are we going to go higher? Right? We don't know where inflation's going to end up. We don't know where CPI is going to end up. With that uptick in June to 2.9%, the year-over-year is at 2.7%. Okay? What we have in here for the budget for the latter half of FY '26 is 2.3%. And so that's a several hundred thousand dollar adjustment if we were to increase the CPI estimate to 2.7%. So we'll have to look at that next month as well, or we look at that in the month of September when we finalize the budget. Future adjustments, right, we have collective bargaining on the agenda tonight to approve, so there will be an adjustment with that pending board approval. We'll look at health insurance. We do have some other state grants that we still need to finalize. We have some carryover dollar amounts. We talked about the title grants. We have an idea, the idea grant carryover as well. And then lastly, final special education estimates, I talked about that, and departmental allocation. So the next, next month, when you see this budget, it will look a little different, more different than it does today, and we'll probably dig into it just a little more. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So just for clarity, we chatted over email a little bit, but just to put it out there, this has 7% for healthcare. I agree with you. We're probably going to need to go higher than that based on what we're seeing historically for the last four or five years. The, this does not include the HESPA contract, which is on the agenda today, and that amount is a little bit under $400,000 that will be added to this.
Correct.
And it has not firmed up on the special ed tuition, which when we get to that later, it is almost, it's gone up 50% at least.
Correct. So that's what we're currently looking at for FY '25, but once we have our final numbers, we'll be able to, you know, lock them, hopefully lock them low with that number. It's always subject to change, right, as we do have students come and go. But correct, that is a big material adjustment still coming down the pipeline.
And then for anybody who's looking at the five-year outlook, you're not reducing any staffing on that even though we're likely to have fewer students? Correct.
Correct, yes. And we as administration, yes, on this version. And we as administration are looking into that so that when we do get to those out years, whether that's next year or the following years, we have a plan to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right. Thank you. Moving ahead, item 11, Director of Communications, Public Engagement, Mr. Bar.
Good evening. I did submit for your review, the employee report, monthly employee reports, and the communications dashboard. Just wondered if anybody had any questions on either of those.
At that time of year for the corporate employees?
We are seeing quite a, yes, so quite a few of the ones that came in over the past month were commercial FOIA, the majority.
Okay. Not seeing any other questions. Item 12, President's Report, under Board Discussion. So all of us, I'm guessing all of us, received the IASB email, and I had a question or two that came up from board members who asked about the Vision 2030 email that came in from IASB. For those that were not aware, this was something that was discussed by the previous board. We can discuss or rediscuss if the current board wants to. I don't have a problem with a rediscussion, but there was a direction and a long discussion that was had by the previous board back in September-ish, so that might be something for a future discussion, resurrect or the other, whether we want to put a formal statement together or help into it. That's just something I'd like to bring up here. Anything else that you'd like to bring up for a future discussion? Right, Ben? Moving on, 12 dot two, there are minutes that are presented for your review. They're mentioned in the agenda, and we'll be approving those hopefully at the next board meeting. Skipping 13, 14, 15, Finance Committee, Mr. Craddy.
All right. 16.1, Monthly Fiscal Updates, Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you. Initially, I was going to say nothing else to add, but I do want to highlight two, two quick things, the charging stations and the electric buses. Let's start with the electric buses. As of the date that I had wrote this memo last week in talking with Bluebird, the four buses were ready. Well, that was a little mistaken. Two buses are ready. They're still holding on to those, they're finalizing and working through the final two buses. Initially, they expected delivery the first two weeks of July. We're already past first two weeks of July. So they do think by the end of the month, we will receive all four electric buses, so that's the good news. It is confirmed that with the ComEd grant as well as the Volkswagen grant, those buses will be cost-free for the district. So we will have to pay for those buses with Bluebird, but then we will receive that bag via the Volkswagen grant reimbursement. And typically, going through this process several years ago with four electric buses that we have on the lot, that's usually a two, two, three month turnaround. So the Illinois EPA is actually pretty good in turning that around. So the ComEd grant portion of that is directly reduced from the invoice that's provided by Bluebird. That's also, that's actually very nice. Bluebird is working with ComEd to receive that rebate. And the charging stations, so we, the charging stations are ready, ready to plug in. We're currently plugging in our hybrid minivans out on the location up there, so they're ready to go. So as soon as those buses arrive on the lot, we will be ready to go for the start of the school year with those new buses. Other than that, there's nothing else to add on the fiscal memo.
Any questions? All right, moving on to 16.2, Revenue and Expenditures Report.
Thank you very much. You're looking at the May financial executive summary. As you know, here we are in the middle of July, the year-end is done. The fiscal team, I wish Jenny was here so I can applaud her because she's doing a fantastic job managing and juggling multiple things up there, up in fiscal, from the Skyward implementation to preparing for the audit. Last week, we did have the auditor on site. It's some preliminary audit work, so that's good news. And in about three weeks, we'll be back out to finalize the district's audit. So we're continuing to work on that. With the May financial executive summary, we continue to track within budget, well, with the exception of a few line items, we talked about one big one, and that's the special ed private tuition, but the other one is certainly health insurance, right? And we'll continue to monitor that. Claims came in at 1.3 million for the month of May, which is, that alone pushes us $200,000 over budget for the year. We haven't finalized June yet as well as the year-end accrual that we need to make for the audit, but expecting that that comes in at an average of 1.2 million, we could be upwards of $1.4 million over budget on that line item alone. So that we know that going in, and that's the challenge we face when trying to figure out what do we budget for FY '26. So once we have those finalized numbers, which we should hear in the next week or so, and then after we sit down with the auditor, we'll be able to make some better decisions as to what's the budget for FY '26. Other than that, you know, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have on the revenue and expenditure report for the month of May.
So just a couple of questions. Sure. Do you happen to remember what we budgeted last year for the increase in healthcare? I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, 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 no. I, I don't want to guess the number.
Because I seem to remember we were trying to get ahead of it last year even, then found a way to blow through it.
Well, the previous year, though, we reduced it, right? We went in with a percentage, and then we reduced the overall budget. So then when we did do the budget this year, I want to say it was for some reason, I'm thinking it was 14%. I generally remember these numbers inside out. But it was 14% also because the previous year, we reduced, we didn't budget as much as we wanted to previously.
I mean, I think we had.
And I can provide the board all of that information.
We've got to use actuals, I think. If we know the actuals, we'd be using that to budget against in that number.
Yeah.
And then the second one is, I think we'd all appreciate a deeper understanding of what's going on on the special ed tuition side of things, because I ran the numbers month by month, and it was going relatively fine halfway through the year, and then it just started skyrocketing.
Yeah.
So that could be more students, but is there something else going on? Something getting applied to this?
We can certainly.
I think we need a little deeper dive because it's way over budget.
No.
And it kind of came out of nowhere.
Yeah. We can provide that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thanks. Remove, item 17 was removed, so policy and legislation.
Thank you. So yes, we have our first reading for a policy revision.
Yeah, so we talked about those last month, but wanted to, again, no adaptations or changes, so it would just be if anybody had anything that came up from last month before we pass it on to our next one for our second reading, and then just take votes to approve.
Anyone have any questions?
I'm not on the policy, but I wasn't here last month. Section 415, which is the privacy one, there's some changes there. Is there any impact in terms of cost for us to do that? And you don't have to answer right away.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but it was, the language looked like we might have to do something in order to actually accomplish that, and I'm just curious.
I will look into that, and I can work with Mike and all of that to pick an answer for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, then we will move it on to Buildings and Ground, Mr. Troy.
All right. 19 dot one, ONM Updates.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. I have a few updates on our summer projects going on. Community solar project, MRE Road, cruiser continuum installed, AC wiring, switchgear, transformers, completion date is still on schedule for the first year. Consolidated flooring to Carpa job at Conley, McCabe, and Martin has been completed, ready to go for school. AdSwell project, which is the administration building here in the high school, progressing nicely, still on track for August 8. The high school chiller has been replaced, still in up and running. They have AC, they love it. It was a hot summer in there, that's for sure, on the east side of the building. That, the commissioning has to be done, that yet, so final completion's not done, but it is up and running. The PAC ceiling project has been running smoothly. The seats are in, electricians are wrapping up the IOA lighting of the seats, so that should be done by the end of next week. And then finally, the weight room flooring is on track, we're scheduled for July 30th. About three to five days, we'll have that done. Any questions on the ONM update?
Any questions? Thank you for all of that. Glad to hear the chiller's up and running and the other, the other items to be completed before teachers report for duty, it sounds like.
I don't want to jinx it.
Yeah, I do, I do that. Thank you. And that's it for ONM on the project update, so thank you. We'll move on to item 20, the beginning of a whole bunch of action items here. 20 dot one, Materials Adoption for the High School Social Studies PCI. Dr. McCrindle, anything to add on this one or give us a data?
Both of these next two items I talked about at the last meeting, just regarding the, we put those into your monthly day reviews, but tonight we see the official.
All right, any questions from the board before we vote on this? All right, with that, I will move to approve your contract with PCI for the amount of $4,504 regarding the high school social studies materials adoption. Have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Feckety. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Biben?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Feckety?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Myarino?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7-0. Item 20 dot two, Materials Adoption for the Dual Credit French III Program through MCC. Again, anything to highlight on this one? I know you just covered it. Make a motion to.
Can I just make a comment before we go to motion?
Please do, yes.
Sure. I just want to applaud the use of an open source curriculum and trying that in the open source French. I think that's, that's really cool and may save us money in the long run, so thank you.
All right, with that, I will move to adopt the Dual Credit French III materials through MCC for the coming school year. All right. Period on that.
I will second that.
Thank you. Feckety, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Biben?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Feckety?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Myarino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Motion passed at 7-0. 20 dot three, HR Personnel, Dr. Zier, anything to highlight off here?
None.
All right. Questions for Dr. Zier before we move on? Or none? Move to accept the HR report. Move to accept the HR report as presented in the agenda.
Second.
By Mr. Craddy, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Feckety?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Myarino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bivin?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 20 dot four, collective bargaining agreement with the Huntley Education Support Personnel Association and District 158. Questions or comments?
Yeah, we're presenting the contract in its entirety over the last few months. HESPA and administration and Mr. Troy have been working to an agreement for a new contract that was being presented to be 2025 through 2028. And both sides worked really hard to come to this agreement, so we met what we feel the needs of, of the members as we get into the school year.
And I'll get off to the floor, Mr. Troy, to get any to add.
Now, we're going to hear, vote here in just a moment, and Dr. Zier, you kind of talked a little bit about the, the process, but just want to highlight that our HESPA staff, our support staff play a vital role in all aspects of the school district, from the time the kiddos get on that bus to the time that they leave. And it's in our nurses' offices, in our main offices, in our cafeterias, in our classrooms, our hallways, every learning environment that we have. And so definitely wanted to, to thank the team for the collaborative efforts to make sure that we are putting together a fair agreement for our staff that play this extremely vital role. And I hope they all know how much we value and, and respect the roles and the, the jobs and responsibilities that they do every day. So we'll continue to collaborate, even though that negotiations is over and ending, and it's, it's a process that we continue to work with them side by side on just making sure that the, the needs of our staff and our students are met every day.
I echo all the comments that have already been said. I will say thank you to your team, Tammy, for all the effort, the time that was spent in, in negotiating this. Thank you for educating me. There are things that I learned along the way. I'm glad I asked the good questions, or hopefully they were good questions, but thank you for bringing those answers forward, one and all, not just you, but the entire team. Each one of these negotiation processes is a learning experience, and there's something to be gained for any board member that is part of that process. So thank you for, for your collaborative efforts, not just for here tonight, but please pass that along to everybody on your team. Thank you.
And I just want to thank you for the time that you spent, your flexibility, and actually meeting with us for our negotiations. We appreciate that. I think the board represented.
All right, with that.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Sure.
Sorry. So I, I just want to say I really appreciate this contract. I think it's doing the right things. When we did the superintendent reviews last year, the one thing that was echoed from all the principals is we need to support our staff in HESPA more, and, and we need to make sure that they're here, and they're here for a long time. And I think this contract does that. That being said, my, my discomfort with this contract is not the contract itself, it is the budget that goes along with it. I think it's a poor look to put this contract in place and then just pass it along to the taxpayers. So if we could, I'd like the, the board to entertain an amendment to this contract and tie with it an adjustment to the budget, which would shift $385,000 from, really, the, the purchase services, supplies, and the other categories, and move that up to the salaries and benefits. Then we can say to our taxpayers, they are not paying for it. We are sacrificing in other areas in order to do that. So I would like to make a motion to have that added as an amendment.
I'll second.
So you're making, you're just making the motion in general?
I'm making a motion in general to amend what we're going to vote on, which would adjust the budget that will be presented next month, because we didn't get an opportunity to present it that way. And that would shift dollars from the, basically, the purchase spending up to the salaries and benefits, so the budget itself would not change in expenses.
I, I think that's something I'd rather have a conversation with Mr. Altmaier to understand the working.
There's still another, there's still another vote on the budget, so you guys can amend and change that. I just would feel more comfortable. I can't vote for a, a great contract like this if I'm just going to pass it along to the taxpayers. It, it just doesn't make sense. So what I want to do is adjust it from there. I think we can afford to do that. I think we've got room on that side, and then we go with the budget that we had a few months ago. That's all I'm asking for.
Mr. Altmaier, would you like to weigh in on this? This is not something that I.
Well, this is certainly the first we're having this conversation, so this is, right, this is, currently, we have a budget in place for which we know that we have a lot of adjustments still coming down the pipeline, whether those are revenue adjustments or those are expenses such as purchase services, special ed private tuition. That's purchase services, right? Today, we are, we are one of the lowest spending K through T districts in the Chicagoland area. We, we are because we don't have a lot of funding coming in, right? We, we don't spend in a lot of areas for which we could spend a little more doing certain programming or certain things for our students, right? The expenses that we have in today's budget reflect trends that we have had over the years for the amounts of supplies, for the amounts of services, for the amounts of purchase services that we need to support what we do for kids. And it's not what we just do for kids, it's what we do for the staff as well, right? Health insurance, for instance. It's, it's everything. I would like to think that it's easy just with a wave of a pen to reduce expenses by $385,000.
Would it help you, Mr. Altmaier?
It's not.
If you knew that in the April budget, you had $370,000 less in that, and then you increased it to this July budget, would it, would it help you to get over that? You're, you're not a voting member on this, but I understand you want the most money as possible.
Well, I do, because, because it's, it's just not that, if, you know, there is a reason we have an operational efficiency goal, right? It's so that we, from an operations perspective, from a budgeting perspective, are making sure that we're allocating resources effectively, right? I think we've proven here at the district that we are, we are probably the most operationally efficient district around. We really are. And I can tell, I can do anything. I could do anything with a budget. But if you're asking me my opinion of, do we want to add an amendment to this vote and simply have Mr. Altmaier reduce the budget by $385,000?
It's not reducing the budget, it's shifting it.
Well, this is shifting, and it's still reducing expenses that are currently budgeted and find, we could find it, but it's going to have an impact. It may have an impact that we don't replace small projects at the building level. It may have an impact that, that we don't like. It's going to have unintended consequences, for sure. I agree, we, you know, managing and making sure that we have the resources that we need each and every year is critical. But saying that we can't, almost every single expense, 65% of the expenses that we pass along are passed along to the community taxpayers. So saying that this, this increase in salaries, we don't want to pass that along to the taxpayers, that's just open mirrors, because the majority of expenses we have are passed along to the taxpayers. And the taxpayers support the education of the school district. And that's how I deal about it. I, I don't know how to answer the question, but if the board directed to reduce $385,000 elsewhere, we can do it. Administration, we will sit down and do it, but it's not always easy. If it was that easy, we would have done it already.
I guess my, my question for clarification is this item on 20.4 is about voting the HESPA contract, not about the budget. We're not voting on a budget. We're voting on a contract, and to amend the budget, what's not tied to this actual agenda item, doesn't seem like, it seems like that might be out of place. And I would almost rather just say, let's have the conversation about the budget at the next board meeting, because you already alluded to, Mr. Altmaier, that you'll be making some amendments, adjustments to the budget, and then we can have a discussion about the budget itself separately from this contract. But I do feel like this contract does reflect the value that the staff provide, and I feel like that this should be voted on as its standalone item.
And I think, I'll just add, I think it's important as board members to the community that what we didn't do here was reflect on how we were going to pay for this contract. And because it was rushed through at the end here, we didn't have a chance to adjust the budget and show what, the way we were going to handle it. And, and that's my discomfort with it, so I'm looking for a way to kind of show, I'm in favor of this budget if it's done this way. It's a, it's a motion for an amendment, every board member has the right to vote no or yes to it?
The motion was made. It was seconded. So go ahead and move forward with the vote. But I would concur with Mr. Bobby that this is tying it to a budget. That's not what this contract is about. Contract is about the contract that's in front of us. So in my eyes, yes, we can have the budget discussion, and we still have several modifications to do that. And I think there's a time to have that conversation, but to, to bring it up and expect it to be resolved in a five-minute vote without proper discussion, it gets short sighted. I just don't think it's, it's a good way to approach solving this problem. I open it to anybody else that wants to comment. Otherwise, we'll just go ahead and take a vote on the amendment.
Right, not hearing any? Do we have a roll call vote on the amendment that was proposed? For the motion that was stated, excuse me, by Mr. Bivin?
Mr. Bivin?
Yes.
Mr. Feckety?
No.
Mrs. Murray?
Yeah.
Mr. Bobby?
No.
Mrs. Myarino?
No.
Mr. Troy?
No.
Mr. Craddy?
No.
And the motion is defeated. With that, I will make a motion to accept the collective bargaining agreement with the Huntley Education Support Personnel Association and Huntley District 158, with school years 2025 through 2028, as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Craddy. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Feckety?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
No.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Myarino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bivin?
No.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Motion passes five to two. Item 20 dot five, hazardous busing resolution. Dr. Zier, anything to add on this one?
Just real quick, I want to make a statement about busing and the 1.5-mile radius. Most districts have this 1.5-mile radius where if it's within that radius, busing is not required. In our district, that radius is there, but we do bus all of our students because we have type one, type two, and type three hazards, so we do this annually. We submit this resolution to the state, and it's something we do every year.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for Dr. Zier? All right, hearing no questions. I move to accept the resolution for the continuance of the hazardous busing program for the district as identified by the school code and as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Myarino, for the second. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Myarino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bivin?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Feckety?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item 20 dot six, payables. Mr. Altmaier, anything to?
Nothing to add on the payables.
Thank you. With that, I move to approve the purchase orders, as, excuse me, purchase orders, the accounts payable, the impressed issued checks, and the dispersment as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Feckety, thank you for the second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Myarino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bivin?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Feckety?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 20 dot seven, Little City Accounts Payable Report. Anything to add, Mr. Altmaier?
Nothing to add, except this will be in the report that we do on a monthly basis at the board meeting each month to, so that we can have a separate vote for the board, for our board members here at District 158.
Okay, can I ask some questions about this? So why is this being broken out? Mr. Troy?
We found ourselves, because of Mr. Bobby's connections to this particular organization, we thought it would be best to break this up separately rather than have him abstain for all of the accounts purchases and everything that's in the payables.
Okay, so, so Mr. Bobby has a conflict?
No, he's trying to abstain and stay neutral in this process. It's not a conflict.
So it's not a conflict to vote for money to the company that you're the CEO of?
So for.
No, I'm asking Mr. Troy, because you're invested in it. Mr. Troy, you're the president.
Yes.
It is not a conflict to vote for money of the company that you're the CEO of from this board?
Considering that he doesn't derive any kind of, he doesn't derive a slight direct financial benefit, and the amount that's being in question here, we thought this would be a nice way, a good way to continue to allow him to function for the quoting of all the payables that have happened in the district and still be able to address the issue at hand.
Okay, so there are seven of us up here. Who is the "we" that discussed this?
I discussed this with Mr. Bobby and administration.
So you didn't think to inform the board?
That's correct.
Why?
I made a decision as president.
So you made a decision on someone you ran with and worked very hard to get elected, who has a conflict that is called out by the ISBE Conflict of Interest page as something that is unacceptable, and you made that unilaterally without discussing to the board?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that is something that should be looked into from an ethical standard outside this board. You can't do that. You have to bring all of us in, into the discussion. This is a conflict. Let's go through the conflicts. In the last four years.
Considering.
Hold on a second, let me go through this. I, I think I have a solution here. What I think we should do is we should have an open session where we talk about this conflict and we come up with a solution that may work. And I think we need to make, we owe it to the public to have this discussion. Mr. Bobby is the CEO of a company that is an NGO. He gets 91% of the money from the same taxpayers we do, from all the different entities we do. There are rules in place, and you just unilaterally decided he can just choose not to vote. That's not the way this works. There's a huge conflict here, and we need to talk about it.
We went through this during the election. This was something that you brought forward. This was something that was discussed with legal and gotten an official opinion on.
When did we get a legal opinion on it?
We didn't get a legal opinion. Bobby presented that during the election process.
So Mr. Bobby paid a lawyer to get an opinion that would work for him?
No, I think one of the things, if I could interject, Mr. Bivin, can continue to have that conversation. We've had other, in, in previous years where there may have been, I'll use the word conflict of interest, where if a spouse or a relative was a member of one of our unions and we had to vote, they would abstain from that. Or if there was a company that they had worked for and there may have been work that was done, that they would abstain from that vote. And so in looking at this, rather than have the entire, if it was on a consent agenda or the entire payables, that, that would have to be pulled off every single time, having this as a separate, which then would have to be voted on. The conflict of interest as to whether or not someone can abstain from that, they should they should abstain from that vote if there is a tie to that. In terms of whether there's a conflict of interest of being on the board with that, there are sidelines and requirements that would have to be met, and those would be if they were a shareholder, and maybe some of the words are a little bit different, but if they were, and then it's a certain percentage, and I believe it's a 0%, right, that is there, or that, and/or that they would be, their salary was in lieu of kind of like a commission, if you will, and neither of those thresholds would be, would be met in this case. And so that would be the conflict of interest to be on the board. In terms of pulling off to abstain, I think that's the right thing that someone should do if they have any ties to something that would be on our agenda.
So most of those, with all due respect, Ms. Lombard-
Sure.
Most of those comments that you made are for for-profit businesses. The ISBE guidelines and the court cases that go with it specifically call out NGOs like Little City, which says if you're an NGO, you have a different standard to meet. And you don't get that exception. And there's a case cited in the ISBE Conflict of Interest. And I think for Mr. Troy, quite frankly, just to willy-nilly say, well, this is the way it's going to be without even discussing it with the board is just absurd. And there are, for everybody to know, this is not $5,000 with the test tubes. This is, in the last four years, over $500,000 have gone to Little City. This is a serious thing. He is, he negotiates with his own equivalent HESPA agreement. And are we going to talk about what happened in May? He actually voted for a payable to go to his company. So what's the discipline in that? I mean, I just, I think we have to have a topic here where we bring this up, and it's, this is the problem. We can have a nice board, but when you bring in these conflicts, it just spreads everywhere and it becomes a problem. We can't just sit here and pretend it's just not here because he doesn't vote for something. You know, we're talking about the special ed tuition. The right group to do that is the special ed committee. But he can't do it. He runs a company that charges special ed tuition. Right? So we need to talk about all the conflicts. And, because it isn't just the payables. There's so much more here. And it's frustrating to me, specifically, Mr. Troy, because you preached to everybody that you, you were a board member. You knew all this stuff, all he worked on, 16 years you've been on the board, and the one thing you didn't pick up was that you can't do what you just did. You can't just make the decisions yourself on something like this. You got to talk to all of us. So I would move that we table this and that we have a discussion in the next meeting where we talk about this conflict and we get all the opinions out there.
I do want to state something for the record here, and I've been transparent about this at the board meetings. In fact, at the last board meeting, did abstain from voting on the payables because Little City was part of those payables. The funding that is coming to Little City is going to students. Students who have severe autism and intellectual disabilities that the district is unable to support. The rate is governed by the state. The only purchase care review board approves the rate. The rate is regulated by ISBE. I do not receive a share from that. There is no conflict as it relates to me being on the Board of Education as relates to ISBE. The conflict is me voting on the payable. And so that, I appreciate Mr. Altmaier breaking this out from the rest of the payables so that I, as a board member, can vote on the rest of the payables and not abstain on Little City payables to avoid any perception of conflict.
So what happens if Mr. Altmaier forgets to edit the PDF file? Is it Mr. Bobby's responsibility, or is it Mr. Altmaier's responsibility? Is he then liable for the mistake?
No, if it gets admitted, then we have an abstention on all the payables.
But would it, would it, Mr. Bobby gets used to it being pulled out and handed to him on a silver platter instead of actually reading the documentation that he's given?
Well, I can't deal in what ifs. I can only deal-
Well, we know it happened, right? Because it happened in May.
This is, this is new, and this was, this was in conjunction with administration so that we can find a solution for this, because we do have times where, whether we're in committee or we only have four board members show up to a board meeting, we can't have one of our board members abstain on every purchase order and every dispersment that goes out the door. Right? So working with administration, myself included, we thought this was a good solution so that Mr. Bobby can abstain on Little City and Little City alone. In that event, even if four board members show up, it's only one purchase order. It's only one payable. It's only one dispersment.
And to be clear-
I think we're having a lot of conversations here that are outside of this agenda item.
No, it's absolutely the most important, because you spent time to edit the PDF and put this together, which means we took administrative time to handle the fact that Mr. Bobby can't read the payables.
This, I think this internally probably will take us about three to five minutes.
Do you edit anything else out of those PDFs?
No, we don't.
So again-
We would be happy to do this for the Board of Education, and we do a lot of things for the Board of Education. And sometimes, but we need to do these things so that we can function appropriately.
Okay, and again, my-
And make sure that payables are paid. I don't want to table this one item tonight, because if we table this one item tonight, we then will go in arrears on Little City and not be able to make the payment, or we as administration will make the decision to pay this.
Well, maybe, maybe someone could go tell them why they're in arrears if it happens. I think we know a guy, right?
Well, then that would take a little more time. I don't thi, I would just, I would prefer from administration, from where I'm sitting, that we do not suppress this. If you want to continue-
Again, my request here, for the most part, I don't want to hold up the money to Little City. That's not my goal. Little City does a good job.
They do.
My request here is that we have a discussion, and I believe it's an open session discussion, on how to deal with the conflict that has arisen, because it is beyond just the paying. And that's the problem we have, Rachel.
And we can get some input about the difference between a for-profit and a non-for-profit and look at that and bring back information to the whole board.
Right.
So in the interim, since this is something you would like the board to discuss, we covered a board discussion item and nothing was said during that. We'll put it on the next board discussion item to actually have this discussion as you requested in the open.
Or you could just put it on the agenda in the next meeting, as you're right as the president.
Either one we can do.
Thank you.
All right, with that said, was there, I can't remember now, was there a motion made? And if we had discussions, there was no motion. I will make a motion to approve the Little City purchase orders and dispersments as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Craddy, thank you. What's, or, excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerty?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Abstained.
Motion passes six, four, zero against one abstention. Revenue contracts, twenty dot eight. Anything to comment on the revenue contract, Mr. Altmaier?
Nothing to add.
With that, I move to approve the revenue contracts for the fundraising activities as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Mrs. Meyerino, thank you for the second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerty?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item twenty dot nine, April 26th budget hearing. Mr. Altmaier?
Thank you very much. This is really kind of standard operating procedures so that we can schedule the tentative budget, the budget hearing on September 18th at 7:00 PM at this location. And then we also note that with that date chosen, that there will be a display draft of the budget available for inspection to the community starting August 18th, which will be shortly after the next board meeting, which we will present the next draft of the budget. So we ask for board approval on the budget hearing date.
Thank you. With that, any questions about the budget hearing? I move to recommend, as presented, September 18th, 7:00 PM for the tentative budget hearing.
Second.
Presented in the agenda. Thank you. Second by Mr. Bobby. Excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerty?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. National school lunch increase. Mr. Altmaier?
Thank you very much. On an annual basis, we review our national school lunch rate. And the current federal net reimbursement free lunch rate is $3.77. So what that rate is from the federal government is, well, that's where they kind of want us to be. And in 2011, schools were required to charge students that price that was put out there by the federal government. But if districts at that time did not want to meet that exact rate, they at a minimum would have to increase their rate by at least 10 cents a year. So starting in 2011, for quite a long time, we have been increasing our national school lunch rate by 10 cents each and every year. And every year, we fall a little bit further, a little bit further behind that federal net reimbursement free lunch rate, which is currently $3.77. With the rising, well, the increase in food costs over the last several years to the tune of 15% to 20%, a little closer to 20%, we're falling a little bit further behind that $3.77 rate. Our current type A lunch rate is 3.35. Many districts around us are currently at 3.45 before they go ahead and they increase to 3.55 or 3.60 or 3.65. So that they get closer to that $3.77 raise. So this will be the first year that we've ever, we've asked for a little more than 10 cents. We're asking for a 25 cent increase to increase the rate from 3.35 to 3.60, which will help us cover some of the cost for rising food prices and get a little closer to which we should be, that $3.77 raise, that current federal net reimbursement rate. So I would open it up to board for discussion and/or questions, but this is administration's recommendation to increase that rate by 25 cents to $3.60.
Questions or comments from the board? Hearing, I think. I move that we approve type A lunch rate increase from 3.35 to 3.60 presented in the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy, for the second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerty?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
And Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item twenty dot eleven, the ALOP Oak Creek Parkway lease agreement. Mr. Altmaier?
Thank you very much. Beginning in the school year 2223, we entered into a new lease with the, this location, which has been working very well for us. When we took over the ALOP program, right, we used to be an outside vendor to run that program. We internally put our own staff over at that location, and we took over the rent of that location at 11922 Oak Creek Parkway. And the lease has expired, and attached is a three-year extension lease agreement, which reflects a 1% increase for the first year lease. And we were able to work out years two and three with an escalation of 2.2 and 2.7% respectively. So less than what we've certainly seen at CPI. It kind of squeezed them a little bit to make sure we can get a good lease rate. We're also having them work with us on preparing the facility for next year, whether that is paint and some other things. Mr. Lindquist had the opportunity to walk that property with him. So we ask the board to approve this three-year lease extension so that we can continue the good services that we're doing at that location for the ALOP program.
Thank you. With that, I'll move to approve the extension of the lease agreement with Oak Creek Parkway for the ALOP program as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Meyerino, thank you for the second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Beckerty?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Bivens?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item twenty dot twelve, building and grounds compensation rental fee. Mr. Lindquist or Mr. Altmaier?
Well, yeah, it's a little bit of all of us. Yeah, okay. So this is, this is something that Lori was, has pulled together. I'm going to have you come up and kind of walk us through some of the changes. Lori has been our director of administrative, administrative services for a long time and has handled the district's rental, oh geez, how many years, Lori? Ten?
This is my 19th year, so probably at least 12 years.
Yeah, so doing it a long time. And over that period of time, at least over the last five, seven, eight, nine years, we haven't made a lot of changes to the rental agreement. And so Ms. Woods, having done this a long time and working with a lot of other school districts and seeing how they're renting their facilities, recommended some proposed changes. And so she will walk us through some of those changes for a vote.
I have a lot. I just wanted to say that we've done this for the past eight years, so I kind of thought it was time. And I did a comparison of recent procedures across 10 districts of similar size or geographic locations. And that indicated that we remain very competitive with our current rates. There were two notable differences. The rates charged to a nonprofit organization within the district's attendance boundaries and the rates applied to organizations operating outside of district attendance boundaries. For the most part, the groups that were operating within district boundaries that are not-for-profit, out of 60 renters, approximately 15 of those groups would be eligible to receive a discount should you choose to do the discount for them. Of those 15 groups, seven typically rent on a seasonal basis, ranging from one to seven days per season. Total revenue from these groups in fiscal '25 is $26,802. Now, that's not to say that if you agree with the 50% discount from these groups, that that would be cut in half to approximately $13,000, because this amount also includes personnel fees that would remain unchanged. And then for the outside organizations, again, the comparison of 10 districts shows that their charges for out-of-district rates typically range between 49% and 56%. We currently are at 20%, which again was decided eight years ago. And so I'm recommending that we charge an additional 40% of the base rate, which is true for- Are there any questions?
I do. I got a question. It may not be totally exactly what you're speaking on. But as far as, I know the other board meeting, I don't know if it was the last one, it may be the one before, we were talking about using the field like students or whatnot. And so it looks like we should be, anyone that's on a field should be renting it. Would that be correct? Like on this premise, you know, how, you know, your rates and whatnot. If anybody's using like the soccer field at the stadium or people using the track at Heinemann. Should it always be something that has been rented agreement wise?
Absolutely. And Mr. Altmaier and I had this discussion a little while ago because we did have an incident earlier in the school year where we had a contract with one of our youth programs. And they took it upon themselves to allow two different groups from the league to participate in a game. And unfortunately, the only reason we found out is because somebody got injured. So I have rewritten that contract also to ensure that if we are contracting with a group that has to be, that group that we are contracting with, they have to be one of the participants of the game.
So what, so students in our district, I know, I know this is maybe off a little bit, so forgive me on that. I don't have another spot to put this. But I was just curious. I was thinking about it today. And as far as like, I know there's a group of soccer players that wanted to play on the field and they were kicked off for the stadium. And so, but then we rent that. So are we concerned with wear and tear on how much we rent it or versus students of our district not being able to use our fields? I just feel, because I, because I walk at Heinemann and I see a ton of kids using, you know, just whatever around there, and I doubt they're renting it. You know what I mean? And which is, I don't care about that. I'm not, that's not my point.
It's very hard to police something like that, you know? And I mean, every morning when I come into work, I see people over at Heinemann also on the track, you know, either walking or I've even seen bicycle riders and, you know, that kind of thing. And we don't want to discourage that type of activity. But, you know, again, if it's a group of people, yes, they need to, they need to be held liable. They need to provide us with insurance. They do need to pay for the wear and tear on those facilities and that kind of thing. Is that just a question?
I just know that, I mean, the one- I just know that, I mean, the ones that were wanting to use it were the soccer team from our district.
I thought a couple of different things. I think that if we have a, a group of students who want it, whether it's a club or whatnot, want to be able to utilize that, they just need to get permission through administration, the athletic department. I don't know the incident of if they had, if they had permission or kicked off, that's a different story.
No.
But I think we could put channels in place for them to be able to do that. I did also want to clarify just one question. I know it's a private, different way you were going, but not, not everybody is paying a rental fee for that. We do have some agreements with the Huntley Park District where the fields on both of the campuses with the middle schools, that's part of their, they utilize that and then they get the upkeep for that.
Correct.
So there are components. But if we do have students who want to be able to utilize that, of course, they want to be able to accommodate those as long as there's not another event. We just need to make sure that we've got, they know, here's who you go to for permission from that. So I would assume maybe if, if that's the case, they were on the football field on the fence, I don't know.
Yeah.
But we'll, they just need to know what to do and.
I just want to know how to guide that conversation, like, no, you can't ever. Or is it something we can use and those players can use it, being that they are students of our district, players and whatever.
Guide them to either Mr. Kemp or Mrs. Captain's and then we can go.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I do schedule all of our high school athletics for their fields and stuff too. So I coordinate with Miss Captain on whether the high school needs, you know, the field or whether I have a renter that needs the field type of thing. As far as just a group of students.
Yeah.
They would be required to have an adult present with this reliability purpose. And then, you know, if it's something like that, if, you know, one of the coaches, volunteers, you know, since you're Spica Montor, I hope you can pronounce this name.
Mm-hmm.
Then they can, you know, just go out and play, but they do have to have a supervisor out there with them.
From our district.
Correct.
Am I considered one?
Can I clarify the, the agenda item? So we're talking about group three, which is community not-for-profit groups would have their current rate less 50% if they qualify. And we're talking about group five, non-district organizations, groups or individuals outside of the district 158 boundaries, which is currently, the current rate's plus 20 and the proposal is current rate's plus 40.
Correct.
Okay. And the other groups are not impacted?
Correct.
Okay.
With, with a couple of exceptions there. The, the base rate, which is group four for the field house, the single court, it has been decreased from, or if we'd like to decrease it from $108 an hour to $75 an hour.
Right.
And that's just to make it more comparable with our current gymnasium rate.
Sure.
The minimum rental requirement for a stadium field or the field house, we used to require a two-hour minimum and some of the groups were having a hard time with that, you know, because it was starting to really cost them when they only needed it for like an hour to an hour and a half type of thing. So I'd like to get rid of the two-hour minimum. And the fee for the stadium lights, it's especially now that we have the solar lights out there, it's kind of a prohibitive for us to include that as an additional charge. Not to mention the fact that, you know, well, we didn't turn the lights on until seven o'clock, but you charged it from four o'clock or, you know, that kind of thing.
Perfect.
And then the, the stadium field scoreboard, this has become a big issue within the past year. We had a group using it and they did damage. So Miss Captain asked me to put in, in the contract that they're no longer permitted to use the controller without a district event supervisor being present. And we do have a few exceptions that we're willing to work on. For example, we've got Huntley U's football that they use it primarily and they were a little upset that, you know, hey, we can't announce our games anymore. And so Miss Captain has agreed that they can designate individual adults, responsible adults, who will be trained by her and they will be able to use the scoreboard then. And those names will be given to our district event supervisor and if the supervisor asks and their name is not on the list, then they forfeit their, their right to use the scoreboard. So it's just, it's unfortunate, but it's extremely expensive.
I have a quick question, just real quick. Clarifying, in group five, where would Mizraff fall on this? Would they be part of two or five? Because I don't know if they're mentoring or because they're special.
Mizraff is, we've always considered them group two.
Okay.
As a part of the district.
Okay. And I know they just have some of their basketball games there that I have attended and I just want to make sure that they're, you know, not going to get hit with a 40%.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions from Ms. Wood? All right. Thank you, Ms. Wood. With that, I move, excuse me, I move to approve the recommended changes to the building and grounds rental application as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Pecati, thank you for the second. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Bobby.
Yes.
Mr. Biddens.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Pecati.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 20 dot 13, equipment declared a surplus, Mr. Almeyer, anything cool on this list?
Nothing. Yeah, no, nothing really cool on the list and nothing, nothing to add.
All right, thank you.
Hi, look.
All right. With that, I move to approve the list that declared a surplus, that the items here are either non-functional or have exceeded their useful life, taking to dispose of them accordingly. Second. Second by Mr. Craddy. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bobby.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Biddens.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Pecati.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 20 dot 14, student handbooks, Ms. Lombard.
These we talked about last month, but again, without the cow, we wanted to bring it back this month for approval and voting on. Two comments that had come up, one was to add a section in each of the handbooks that specifically calls out student voice and that we encouraged that and what are the different opportunities for that. So the memo did have two small paragraphs that Ms. Woods went in and added to the handbook so that that was specifically spelled out and encouraged. And the second, not that it was going in the handbook, but it was recommended that we kind of have an itemized list for parents as well as students. The student part will go much more in-depth during the first week, two weeks of school about all of the handbook components, but I believe it is going out in the newsletter, family newsletter. We had created a memo just updating what are those, highlighting what are the changes for next year and that'll be in the family, as August, August 10 newsletter, August 10 newsletter, my apologies. So any questions?
So I wasn't here last month, so I apologize. I do have a couple of questions. The addition of the sophomores who were caught driving to school item, I think that's wonderful. Why is it a may instead of a shall? I mean, if, if someone actually drives to school when they don't have a parking pass and they take advantage of that and they get caught, why aren't they forfeiting their next year? Why isn't it an absolute?
Did I have that answer?
Okay. And then the second one is, what is, what is changing with smart watches? Because I saw they got added to a list.
They were in, I believe they were in previously, we have had some of the students similar to like the cell phone, so now that they can get all their text messages and everything on there. So if they are inappropriately using that, what do you call it, just like a cell phone to the parents of, hey, you can't do that.
I mean, but they're allowed to wear, that we're not taking away their right to wear the precious smart watch.
As long as they are not being disruptive and all of the, I mean, I know there, there are individuals who need that for health reasons, there, there are all kinds of things on there, as long as it's not in that disruptive or inappropriate manner.
Knocked out, so, thank you.
Yes. We did, we had a few situations of that at different levels.
I'm sure it can do the test for you, actually.
But we can give that answer on the other component of that. I know we have taken that. I, I would think we've, we had a couple of situations where, that I'm aware of where somebody did drive and it was due to a couple of components where family situations that were caught, talk to the parents, something like that, maybe not would be a, a situation where it's a guarantee. If there was a real valid reason, they probably should ask for approval.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's a real valid reason, I would expect that they would, they should ask.
Right, yeah. And we have had some where we've had some sophomores who had passes in, in the past and they were removed from them and all of that. So we can get it, some more specifics on why, maybe the may based on some of the things that they've had, but absolutely it's in there so that they can't be doing this or it will be taken away from the future.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right. I move to approve the 2025, 26 student handbooks for the, all the elementary schools, both middle schools and the high school as presented, including the athletic handbook.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bobby, for the second. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Yes.
Mr. Biddens.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Pecati.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bobby.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. 20 dot 15, refuse and recycling, calling disposal bid. Ms. Linkwist.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Item presented to you is the refuse and recycling contract. Our current contract is set to expire August 5. We entertained a bid opening on June 9. As you can see, we received two bids, very close in price, but what really stands out between these two is the annual increase of the CPI. LRS is going to work with our verbiage on our contract where 5% for the current Fargo-Naperville Elgin CPI, whichever is less of the two, where MDC, Mariner Disposal, wanted to use the urban garbage trash collection CPI, which has been below 6% for the last year. So this is why the administration is asking the Board of Education to approve the contract for LRS in the amount of $54,420 for one year with a renewal option up to 10 years. Thank you. I would like to acknowledge Kathy from LRS who came for a wonderful sitting board meeting tonight. And her team is excited to become a partner of District 158. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you for, it was great to be here tonight. I just want to put a face with the name, the name of faces and any of you who have any questions, if I can be a resource. I'm an open book when it comes to local services. I've worked with many, many schools. All of you signed up this year with me. Harlem School District signed up, Nick and Nick as well. So we're having a lot of movement with school districts. We're very well aligned, understanding your budgetary constraints and we're here to identify opportunities to be.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you for being patient. I didn't realize you were in the audience, otherwise we would have shuffled things up so you wouldn't be here till nine o'clock at night. Thank you for being patient.
Had I known.
Yeah.
Oh, and I'm always goes last. I don't.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Linkwist about this bid? All right, here are your questions. I move to approve LRS and their bid for contracted sum for one year and the terms as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Pecati for the second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Yes.
Mr. Pecati.
Yes.
Mr. Bobby.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Biddens.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 20 dot 16, have in front of you minutes as they're presented. Unless there's any questions or comments here, I move to accept meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Second, Mr. Craddy. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Biddens.
Yes.
Mr. Pecati.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bobby.
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Item 21, public comment. Did we receive any?
There are no additional ones.
All right. We have no public comment for the second round. With that, item 22, adjournment, I make a motion to adjourn at 9:17.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pecati. Voice call, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, everyone. Good night and good luck.
Do we have another meeting?
Yeah, yeah, there's one more meeting to go.
Oh, yeah. Oh. You, yeah, this will be, yeah.
All right. Yeah, I wish I know where. Yep, we're gonna go. All right. We have a hearing agenda for the e-Learning Day Plan. So Thursday, July 17, 9:08 PM, call the meeting to order. We have roll call votes.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bobby.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mr. Pecati.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mr. Biddens.
Here.
All right, we have seven board members present. I have two on the agenda. E-Learning Day Plan, Dr. McCrumb will take the lead.
No problem. Last month at the board meeting, we did go ahead and present our proposed e-Learning Day Plan. This would allow us, upon board approval, to incorporate an e-Learning Day and lieu of an emergency day should Ms. Lombard go ahead and call a day like that. The plan does have, no question, Ms. Lombard, the plan did stay pretty similar minus a couple of the tweaks that we made because of kindergarten, not having the devices. So we have an alternative plan which aligns to our early childhood plan of some paperwork, paper packets, sorry, paperwork, but not really paperwork, going home with the students so that they can do some learning at home. And there are no other changes. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but we did discuss it last month and nothing to change this then.
All right. Any questions? Please go ahead at this time.
I have a quick question. This then, if we move forward with it, goes to the regional superintendent. So is this just a pretty cookie cutter or they come back and you're just making adjustments from there?
Yeah, good question. So our plan is pretty robust. We include face-to-face instruction and many districts have plans that don't include that and they do get approved. So it does go to regional superintendent for approval. They did approve this plan last time and so we're confident it should be okay. But if not, we would make a couple of tweaks, bring it back and let you know any of those updates, but we spoke pretty good about it. Thank you so much. Thank you, Kathy.
All right. If there's no other questions, go ahead and, item three, any public comment pertaining to this special meeting?
Oh.
Okay. With that, moving to item four, e-Learning Day Plan, I move to accept the e-Learning Day Plan as presented.
I will second that motion.
Pecati, thank you for the second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Craddy.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Pecati.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mrs. Marino?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. I move to adjourn special hearing at nine ten P.M.
Second.
Second by Mr. Craddy. Voice call vote, all in favor of the term of, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Return at nine ten. Thank you.
Okay, now, Dr. Perry. Not for all of you.